This conference will now be recorded.
Nice to know.
You calling this?
Yeah. Oh, by the way, I had to turn the air way up. He just fixed it. Okay.
Nice to know that.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of our Planning and Zoning Commission for the City of Lago Vista, August 13th. And I'd like to just make sure that we are all present. I'd like to ask each one of the commission members to just, if you're logged in, to just acknowledge.
Hi.
Andy White.
Andy White. Charles Solomon here by phone.
All right, Charles.
All right.
All right. We have myself, Gary Zaleski, Andy White, Paul Prince, Tom Monahan, and Linda, no, Richard Brown, and Larry Hagler. And by phone, Charles Solomon was calling in. And we do have our city council liaison, David Williams, our city attorney, Aaron Salvera. And is Roy with us by any chance, Aaron?
Yes, sir. I'm here.
Oh, okay. I didn't see your smiling face, Roy.
My smiling face under my baseball cap with too much hair coming out.
Well, okay.
Me too.
Well, first of all, we would like to go with item number one, to convene into a closed executive session pursuant to section 551.071, Advice Council Regarding Consultation with Legal Counsel Regarding State Laws and Rules, Procedures, Applications to Subcommittee's of the Planning and Zoning Commission. So with that, we will go to our executive session.
Do we have an email with that link, or it's just a calendar? I'm trying to find it right now.
It came from, well, it came from Aaron.
Likely in an email. I don't remember. It's on my calendar, but so.
All right, okay.
I have.
I see it as an email calendar invitation. Thank you.
Okay. And you'll have to log out of this meeting completely, otherwise it messes with the system, won't let you log into the other one.
Okay. And Aaron, you're saying that we just touch the icon to leave, but there's no, there isn't anything where you log out, correct?
Well, so you'll touch the icon to leave, but like on my computer at the bottom in my taskbar, there's a little thing that says "go to meeting," and I have to close out of that.
Oh, well, I'll.
Or if you have a little taskbar at the top that says "go to meeting," I would close out of that and then go back in.
All right. Well, we'll do our best and see everybody sometime soon.
Take the phone with you.
I'm sorry, can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
Are we supposed to do something else to?
Y'all can just hang out, wait until we're back, whatever you want to do. The meeting is recording and.
Adam, they're going to go, the members of the subcommittee?
Okay. So I just hang loose?
Yeah, here, I can walk you through it, dude. I'm a citizen just like you. At the top left screen, you should see a record button. Do you see that? That means that the city's recording this even as you and I speak right now. And what's happened is the committee members have gone into an executive session with counsel to discuss, as noticed in the agenda packet, the subject matter of what they'll be discussing in the executive session, and then they'll come out into the open session after they're done convening in executive session.
Okay, I got you. So I just stay where I'm at?
Yeah. Do you have an application before the committee?
Yes, sir, I do.
Oh, then, yeah, they'll, you just hang loose or keep one ear to your computer and wait for them to come back. If you look at the agenda packet, you can see where, in what order you're.
Yeah. I thought maybe, I thought I was one, maybe not. I could be wrong, but I thought I was one.
If you go to the, do you know where to find the agenda?
Yes, yes, sir, I do. Yes, sir.
Do you know how to pull up the packet associated with the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you can find it on there.
And then that'll let me know. Okay.
You'll hear.
But other than that, I just gotta, other than that, I just gotta listen in and see when y'all get back, if I am first.
I'm not, like I said, I'm a citizen just like you, but yeah, they'll reconvene. You'll just have to listen for it.
Okay. All right. Thanks, sir. I appreciate it.
I'm going to turn my camera off so nobody has to watch me eat chips and drink wine.
Roy.
Yes.
Hey, good evening. How are you?
I'm doing fine, sir.
Do you know why they are required to record like this in between executive session and open session?
They're not required to, but it's easier.
Hello?
Yes?
Hello?
Hello?
Are we coming back?
We are, just to give us a few minutes.
Trying to determine, uh, we get everybody, uh, back in. I see that, uh, we have, uh, Commissioner Andy White, uh, Tom Monahan, Paul Prince, and I believe, uh, Richard Brown was there. And watching for Larry.
I think Mr. Solomon's still on the phone, but...
Yeah, I wasn't there.
Okay.
Take me back.
All right, I'm just waiting to see, uh, yeah, there's, uh, Richard trying us. All right then, uh, we will go ahead and, uh, come back from our executive, uh, session at, uh, 7:49, uh, PM. And, uh, in accordance with, uh, Open Meetings Act, the, uh, Commission is prohibited from acting or discussing other than factual responses to specific questions of any item not on the agenda. So are there any, uh, citizen comments for any, uh, non-related, uh, non-agenda items? I'm sorry, I'm... Having, having a very difficult time. I don't know, is anybody else having a hard time, uh, hearing whoever that was?
I'm not sure that's intentional, it might be an open mic.
Yeah, it sounded like background noise, maybe on Charles' phone, actually.
Uh, okay, I see that there's a number of people that are muted, but that's okay. So, uh, it appears that, that we don't have any, uh, citizen comments. So from then, we'll, uh, go to the, uh, public hearing and action applications. Uh, item number two on the agenda. Item number two on the agenda, two zero dash one six one six, CO dash U, consideration of a recommendation regarding a conditional use permit application pursuant to section seventeen of chapter fourteen of the Lago Vista Code of Ordinances to allow for an accessory building larger than a hundred and twenty square feet within the required rear yard setback at twenty seven one zero Deep Creek Lago Vista Country Club Estates, section one, lot ninety-one. And, uh, we would like to, uh, have the staff presentation.
Yes, sir, uh, there are many of you that will probably remember this, uh, from not too terribly long ago, when it was in front of you as a smaller carport. And I told you at the time that had it been an enclosed building, that you wouldn't have had to, uh, give a recommendation on it. Unfortunately, uh, that was not actually accurate, and it was going to come back to you regardless, but the reason it was going to come back to you regardless was the fact that I, too very quickly discounted the value of the site plan that was submitted. Uh, it showed that there was an encroachment in the rear yard setback if I'd have looked hard enough, but I didn't. So regardless of, of the fact that it, it's now no longer a carport, uh, that you, they still have to get a recommendation from you about that encroachment. Uh, what is required back there is a twenty-five foot setback, uh, it's actually six feet from the property line. However, what it will be next to is somebody, a vacant lots, uh, future side yard setback. And, and to appreciate the, the nature of the beast, so to speak, if they would have instead addressed this house off Thunderbird and turned it the other way, that accessory building could be in the exact same spot, and the requirement would be five feet rather than twenty-five feet, and it would have the same impact on that future residence than it does now. So if, if that helps you understand the perspective, uh, that's why we mention it.
I'm going to, uh, ask any of the commissioners if they have any comments or de-clarification from, uh, the staff, uh, prior to the applicant's presentation. If that's the case, then, uh, we will, uh, go ahead, and I believe, uh, Mr. Heston, you're the applicant, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct. Can you hear me?
Yes, uh, we can, if you want to go ahead with your, uh, applicant presentation.
Yeah, I mean, it's, uh, it's not much of a presentation, unfortunately, uh, I guess, uh, um, who was speaking before, uh, about it? Is that Roy?
Yes, that was Roy Jamborka.
Okay, yeah, he actually brought up, well, one of the points I was gonna make is, uh, you know, when I moved in here, uh, and I understand, I understand the rules as I read them now, but, uh, I under, uh, I was, I was told, I wasn't told that I could put a building there, but I was told that it was a possibility just because my property was kind of unique, you know, because it was, it's a, it's a corner lot, and it's kind of wedged in between two properties. One, like Roy said, the, the property behind my fence is, uh, is, is the way their property is set up, their side yard would be up against my backyard, you know? Um, I mean, he, he made y'all aware of that. And, uh, other than that, all I can say is, the only reason I had, I have to put it there is because from my backyard, about twenty feet, uh, coming towards Deep Creek, is, I only have about twenty feet before it slopes off to a forty-five degree angle. And I understand that's not y'all's problem, but that, that's the only reason that, it's really the only option of, uh, that I have to put a building up, is why, is why I had a pad poured there. And that's pretty much it. I know it's not much of a presentation, but, you know, that's pretty much all I got, so...
It's all we need, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, that's fine, Adam. Uh, I guess, uh, question that I've had, might be for you, Roy, is the, uh, pad that's already poured there, is that encroaching already on the, uh...
A, a slab. A slab is not, uh, the, the setback prohibits a structure, it does not prohibit a pad.
Gotcha, so there, there isn't any encroachment with the pad, it would be, uh, when the building actually goes up?
That is correct.
All right. And, uh, any, uh, any, uh, members of the Commission have questions for either staff or, uh, Mr. Heston?
I was looking at the, uh, the drawing of the building.
Yes, sir.
It goes the height of nine feet, but it looks, according to the diagram, that would be at the, at the, uh, lower part of the roof. I'm just curious what the height of the ridge line would be at the top of the roof.
Uh, I was under, I was under the impression, though, the drawings that my wife got, that the, the, the top, the very top of the roof was ten feet, and that the, the side was seven feet.
Yeah.
I don't have a photo of it.
There, the, the package they had before, when it was a, a carport and a garage, had the, the pitch roof, but it wasn't real significant. I mean, it, it, it doesn't have a lot of height.
Yes, sir.
It's well under the eighteen feet.
Yes, sir.
Well, I would, I would like to say...
It's, it's three and twelve, it's on the drawing, I just had to look, I'm sorry.
Okay, I would like to say that, uh, Mr. Heston's comment that the wall height at the eve was only seven feet could not be correct because the door height is eight feet. It's an, it's an eight by eight door.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, I, I just don't have them in front of me, I could be wrong.
I do, I can, I can do the math in my head. It's a half of eighteen, it's nine feet, it's a nine-foot eve height, it's three and twelve, it's ten foot six at the ridge.
Okay, I apologize, I should have had that in front of me.
You were off by six inches.
I'm sorry.
There's some material thickness, but...
Missed it by that much.
Yeah, that's, that's my life story.
Probably.
Yes, sir.
I would also like to add that, uh, Mr. Jambor, uh, made a comment, uh, or, uh, at least a notation about the addition of the, uh, subdistances as they added up to the total distance of the width of the lot. And it looks to me like Mr. Heston may have, uh, measured that thirty-five feet, uh, from what he perceived to be the property line, actually from the road.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Rather than from his property line, and that, uh, if that number is no longer thirty-five feet and adjusted to reflect a measurement from the property line, then it might add up to eighty instead of ninety-four.
Yeah. Yeah, I just pointed that, those are the kind of things that made me lazy and quit looking. It's no excuse, but that's, that's what happened.
Is there, uh, any other, uh, members that, uh, have questions or comments for the applicant or to, uh, the staff? If that's not the case, then we'll go ahead and open the, uh, public meeting at seven fifty-nine PM. Any, uh, members of the, uh, public that would like to make, uh, comments at this time? There don't appear to be any, uh, comments, uh, that being the case, we will close the public hearing at, uh, eight PM. Uh, any, uh, discussions on part of the P and Z members? I would like to say that, um, the only, we, we only received two comments, apparently, from, uh, the, the members who, uh, in the two-hundred-foot zone. And one, one is on, uh, the, uh, east side of, uh, of, uh, Mr. Heston's lot, but the other is from the person most impacted by our decision. Uh, and he's, he's the guy who's behind it, who, I guess, would like us to treat our, our decision on the basis that he should, uh, that the decision should be based on the twenty-five foot setback, I, I guess, but he's not here to represent that, but he, he says he's opposed.
Yes, sir, and, and I might add that we received that comment when we didn't even know about the setback encroachment.
Oh.
The original praise did not advertise that.
So perhaps he did not as well, then, Humbry? Well, I...
Yeah, I, 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 uh, hear you, Richard, I kind of have the same question, that this, this person is the most impacted, it's, it's a vacant property at this point, well, trees, but no building. I'm reading his comment here, uh, he says, "Due to lack of any specific details, building size, location, height, et cetera, I'm unable to make an informed decision and therefore opposed to this request." Unfortunately, I mean, we have all those details in front of us, and, um, he's not here to look at it and comment on it, so that, um, I guess I'll, uh, discount his opposition a little bit because he wasn't opposed enough to, to, uh, to actually attend and join the meeting tonight.
Um, pardon me, but I do not see those comments that you just quoted, Paul. All I see is a checked box.
It's typed, it's typed in.
It says comments right below.
Yeah, it's typed in and it's handwritten, so that, right?
Thank you.
He typed it instead of writing it, so it's printed and not written.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay.
And for the record, we, we receive far more phone calls than we do written comments on every application. A lot, far more...
Working.
Yep.
All right then, uh, any further discussion on, uh, this particular item? If, uh, if not, would someone like to make a recommendation?
Hmm, I can't if no one else...
Hmm, I can't if no one else wants to.
Speak up.
Hang on, I gotta get the number here. Okay. With regard to agenda item one, case number 20-1616-CO-U at 2710 Deep Creek, I recommend that, or I make a motion that we recommend city council approve the project as amended.
And I would just make a point that that is item number one, and I will second that motion. It's been moved and seconded. Is there discussion on this particular item?
I would like to say that on the agenda, it seems to be item two.
Right, that's right. Number one was executive session, Gary.
Oh, yeah.
An earlier version of the agenda that, that didn't have that.
Ah, gotcha.
Okay.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, if you would, raise your hand and, all in favor, we have one, two, three, four, and five. The only hand I don't see is Mr. Brown's, and Charles, are you voting yes or no?
My hand's up. Yes.
Okay, that's a yes? Any opposed? One opposed, motion carries. It was opposed by Linda, Mr. Brown. Moving on to item number three, 20-637-RZ, REZ, consideration of a recommendation regarding zoning district change request from R1A, single-family residential, to R2, two-family residential for the property located at 7904 Arapaho Trail, Barquet Ranches, Platform Lot 4122. And Roy, if you would, raise this with the staff presentation?
Yes, sir. The applicant shares a rear property line with commercial property, in this case, a no-to-me, that you're probably all very familiar with. And certainly, the, the idea that a zoning change application was filed is not surprising. Unfortunately, it's the, it's the particular application that he found, that he filed, that was a little bit less than compelling, and mainly because of the reasons he stated that the staff was not impressed with. But we might add, you know, however inaccurate those statements are, we did have a number of phone calls about this from people that were in the 200-foot notification, and they quite frankly were torn between the idea of whether they were, even though they weren't thrilled about the, the change to R2, and found it a little bit of a break in the pattern. Many of them chose not to, to be opposed, because they welcomed the utility extension that would come through any development that occurred there, that might spur on the viability of the single-family residential across the street. I think, quite frankly, we, we received a whole lot of phone calls on this one, and people that never responded in writing in opposition. Typically, if somebody's in opposition, they respond. And, and that didn't happen in this case.
So, Roy, just to clarify, what I hear you saying, this is Paul, if I can ask Roy a question, Gary.
Yeah, go right ahead, Paul.
The, thank you. The verbal feedback that you got was sort of a soft support. Is that fair to quantify it that way, as opposed to a, a strong support?
Yes, sir. It would, it might, you might even say it was implied support.
Okay.
We weren't thrilled about the zoning district change. If it had been commercial, and they'd have brought a change to a commercial property, they would have probably welcomed what was going to be across the street. It was the introduction, if you will, of, of a new use type, if you will, to an area where it doesn't otherwise exist.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, but like I said, I, I think the idea was that, well, gosh, we'd normally be opposed to this, but wow, you know, if, if somebody's willing to bring utilities down here, maybe it's not so bad after all.
But if, but if anybody wanted to build on their lot, so they, they'll get those utilities anyway, right?
I'm sorry?
If anybody built on those lots, like next door to it, the utilities would be running through there anyway, right?
Right, that's what I'm saying. They would, they would have the advantage of not having to finance the utility extension. Okay, I see. And that includes the people directly across the street.
What about the street itself?
I'm sorry?
What about the street itself?
The condition of the street, yeah.
Pardon?
The current policy, if you will, on a street like that is that as soon as the house qualifies for CO, in fact, they'll plan it even before then. But the idea is soon as the heavy equipment is off that property, that public works will improve that street. We have had some situations that have been difficult, because some people don't call until they're through, and we don't even know that they're building out there, or public works done. So they've asked people to notify them and keep them apprised of when they expect it to be finished. But, and a perfect example is Green Park. If somebody builds on Green Park, in the park that's so hard to get on, even in the past, they would go ahead and improve it right up to that house.
So, this is, this is like a spot zoning request, isn't it? And it kind of reminded me of that issue we had a couple months ago. A guy wanted to rezone three or four lots in the middle of a block behind those apartments off Boggy Ford.
Yes, sir.
And we turned that down because it kind of was discontinuous with everything else. So, I'm, I guess, what are your thoughts on comparing those two for this situation?
Oh, absolutely. And, and I'll bring up another property to you, even though it didn't require a zoning request. The only similar lot you have here is the ones that are the back half of the brand-new fire station. Okay? And even though a fire station can go in a residential zone, I don't think anybody would consider it similar in nature to a single-family residence. So that's, that's the most analogous use of that property for a change is, is, you know, the change from R1 to, to something other than some level of commercial seems a bit odd.
So speaking to that, the future land use map?
Right.
Obviously, that's, you know, future zoning would be regional, retail, office, commercial.
Yes, sir.
Which is kind of a segue into residential, but ordering, ordering that directly across the street and going up the hill is mixed use. I would have a tendency to value that more than R2. Because that would blend in with a future development of that area, more so than having a residential duplex in the middle of what is going to be a regional retail office, commercial, and then mixed use across the street. It just seems like, you know, I, I get it, like, let's get the utilities in here, get taken to the dance, and then ride home with somebody else. I don't know, you know, it's this weird analogy, but that's all I have.
Any other questions of the staff at this point? If not, we'll move on to the applicant's presentation.
I did not see, just for the record, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to point out to you, you know, the, the drawings that were submitted by the applicant, you know, are, have numerous problems about being allowed even in an R2 district. And we made him aware of that, and he acknowledged it in an email that's in your packet.
That's correct.
Understand, he can't build that even if you approve this, this application, or recommend that this application be approved.
Correct.
I mean, he's-
Well, if the applicant is not a property, right?
I'm sorry?
He wants to build this as a rental property versus living there himself, because it's being-
Right. But the, the, the plans and elevations he submitted, they don't meet our ordinance.
Yeah. Since the applicant isn't present, we're going to open the public hearing at 8:14. And any members of the public that would like to comment on this particular item number three? Don't appear to have anyone commenting on this application. So we're going to close the public hearing at 8:15. Any continued discussion on this particular item? If there's no further discussion, then-
I do, I do, Gary, just a couple of, a couple of comments. So, one, I, well, really, one comment with two parts. My, my fear is that this application is just about trying to change the zoning so that he can hope to sell the property to someone for a little bit more money than he could as an R1. And that, actually, that fear is reinforced by the fact that it didn't bother him at all, that the plans that he showed are completely impossible to build. So, so I think the idea that he would be building there imminently to bring water to his neighbors is, is, is fool's gold. So I'm, I'm fairly negative on this one.
Iron pyrite, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think this seems like spot zoning to me, and I think, kind of basically for the same reason we disapproved that zoning change over there off Boggy Road and Lot Back would apply here.
Was there further discussion?
I, I have something I would like Roy to clarify for me, please. Roy, you made the comment that it, it would be a more reasonable application of, of a zoning change to seek maybe C1 or, or 2 than R2. And that, that's not clear to me, because it, I know that R2 is somewhat different from a single-family, but it is still residential, and so it wasn't clear to me why you thought it would be a better suggestion to rezone it commercial than R2.
Because of the, the contiguous property? I mean, a no-to-me is a, is a rear yard neighbor. The rest of the property that is on the other side of the street is all commercial. You follow me that? It's not just the zoning district, but the development pattern reinforces commercial use of that property.
Is there any other?
It happens to be consistent with the future land use map as well.
Okay, but you would even advocate a, a spot rezone then to-
That's irrelevant to this particular case.
I'm not sure you would argue that it's a spot rezoning when, when it touches so many existing commercial properties. The, 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 the street, you know, itself is, is a reasonable buffer, if you will, between what's on one side versus the other. What's contiguous to this is all commercial.
Yes, I see that.
Except, except right and left, which are vacant lots. And, and even the vacant lots behind it are already commercial. And like I said, the only development on this street in the vicinity is half the fire station.
Okay.
And if I may say myself as well, that I made a point earlier, that the future land use map does show this area as regional retail office commercial for future planning. And I think we have an obligation to follow these future land use maps to a certain extent, in the fact that there was a lot more public involvement at the time this decision was made, went through a long process to get to this point. This specific area was focused on considerably along Bronco anyway, so it's just for that noted.
Any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, then regarding, make a motion that item number three, 20-61637-R-R-E-Z, not be recommended for a zoning change to the city council of Lago Vista, Texas.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Did you take public comment on this item?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we did. We opened the public hearing at 8:14 and closed it at 8:15.
Yes, sorry, my bad. Excuse me.
You're not bad. Is there a second?
Also, I guess.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on this particular? All in favor of non-recommendation? I have one, two, three, four, five. It appears to be a unanimous decision. Is that correct, Charles?
Yes.
Unanimous decision? On item number four, 20-1647-CO-U, consideration of recommendation regarding a conditional use permit application pursuant to section 16-70 of chapter 14 of the Lago Vista Code of Ordinances to allow for a dog grooming service as a home-based business at 2502 Newton Drive, Lago Vista Country Estate, Country Club Estates, section one, lot 91. And if you would make the presentation, Roy?
Yes, sir. The most important thing I, I guess I need to add, you know, when we're in a regular meeting and we get comments that are outside of the 200-foot notification area, we don't add them to your packet, but we print them and have them available, so if you want to review them, we can. We got pretty close to two dozen emails on this, but from people that were in support of the application that were, seemed to be customers that live within the 200-foot notification area. So I need to consider that statement the equivalent of a stack of papers that we put on the dais for you. I don't know any other way to handle that, other than to mention it. Like I said, I think the important thing, it has all been brought out in the staff report, the comparison to similar operations, the difference between the similar operations. One of the things I learned in one of those emails is that the mayor approved this for operation right after COVID as, as emergency means, and so it's been in operation. And so whatever impact it might have had seems to have existed. If, if there was a negative impact, you know, people are aware of it. And we have not received a complaint that I'm aware of.
Roy, just to clarify- Roy, just to clarify, you said you got a stack of support letters. Was there any? Or emails, okay. Was there any opposition that came in from people outside the 200-foot range?
No, sir. We did get an email that was opposition, but they were within the 200-foot range and it's in your packet. They just didn't use the form.
But that email that's in opposition, that's a property where nothing's built yet, right?
I gave the number in red. I'd have to look at the map to confirm.
I think that's correct.
I didn't drive by myself, but the area photo shows that property to be undeveloped.
Yeah, yes, sir. I think that's correct. But here's the thing, I think they may own the house adjacent to it that's outside of the 200 feet and that they own those two vacant lots. So you're right, the part in the notification area is vacant, but they live next door.
Okay. Any other questions of the staff at this point? All right, then we'll move forward with the applicant presentation. Ms. Morgan, would you like to make a presentation at this time?
Yes, I would. First of all, thank you, everyone, for being here and to hear me tonight. I am basically, I've been working with animals for the last 10 years. My career started in the rescue world where I volunteered at animal shelters in my community. For many years, I actually still volunteer with rescue. And I worked in rescue professionally for about two years and then I started working as a dog bather. When I began bathing dogs, I just fell in love with the art of grooming and I've dedicated the last eight, almost nine years to being a professional dog groomer. I'm an AKC Safe Certified Groomer and I just want to share my knowledge with the community. On living in Lago Vista, there's such a strong sense of community here and there are so many, we've met so many friends and so many neighbors and they pretty much all have dogs and they're pretty much all in need of a local reputable groomer. So I would just like to offer that to the community in the safest possible way ever, in a one-on-one setting, one household at a time, one group of dogs from one family at a time. And therefore I can completely sanitize everything that the dogs touch, all the equipment that touched the dogs before the next clients come in for the day. Just with the way things are right now, I believe this is the safest option for the residents of Lago Vista to have their dogs groomed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is this all done by appointment or do people just come in at random and drop off their animals?
Oh, absolutely, appointment only.
So I have a question. If, I know you just started your business, but, you know, I read in your materials that you'd probably limit to five dogs a day because you only have one there. So if demand picks up, do you have some plans in the future to actually seek a property that would actually allow that thing versus a home business?
If I got busy enough, that's a possibility, but it's not in my plans at this time.
And so one more. You're going to take one dog at a time, you're going to have a couple kennels. What if you end up with a customer that the other supposed to pick up the dog as soon as it's ready to go? What if they have a habit of waiting three, four hours later to get their dog? Just continue the customer or what?
Well, so if it's a one-time thing, that's no big deal. I can put the dogs in a kennel, I can take them out on a leash to go potty if they need to. I can provide them water. If it was something where it was causing, if they did it more than once or they repeatedly were picking up late, it would just be said to them that in order for them to continue to be a customer, I need them to pick up within that timeframe so that I can continue to offer a one-on-one service. I think most people here in Lago, a lot of people are retired and I think being able to drop their dog off and come back in an hour and a half and pick the dog up, I think that actually works out for the majority of residents that live here in Lago. But I do have the kennels available if a dog was late to be picked up.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Roy, just to clarify, this conditional use permit, this would only apply to this particular applicant or would it go with the property?
There is some conflicting language in our ordinance based on whether it's a normal home-based business or a home-based business created by a conditional use permit. It's real ambiguous, but you can certainly make the suggestion that it's not tied to the property. I've never heard of one suggest that it's tied to the property before, but there's some language in the ordinance that's real peculiar in that regard. That it could be different under a conditional use permit approval.
So maybe our city attorney might help us a little bit. Could we conditionally specify that this would be for this applicant, Ms. Morgan, at that property? And should the property go to someone else, they cannot automatically have a dog grooming business?
Sorry. Yes, yes, you can include that as a condition.
All right, thank you.
Any future purchasers of the property would have to apply for that home-based business.
And we should state that specifically, shouldn't we recommend?
That's correct.
All right.
Question, Erin?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Morgan, my understanding is you're renting that property, is that correct?
I'm sorry, Andy, can you repeat that?
Yes, are you renting the property or do you own the property?
I am renting the property from my grandparents, Stuart Mackay. I know some of you know him, but yes, I'm renting from my grandparents.
And one more question, do you park your cars in the driveway or in your garage?
Typically, one in the driveway, one in the garage.
Thank you.
If it means anything, both can be parked in the garage.
How many cars could be in the driveway at once?
Four.
Four?
Do I remember the description of what you plan to do correctly? Are you going to use the garage for actually doing the grooming as well as a bathroom for cleaning?
The garage will not be used for the business. The dining area was where the grooming will be completed and the shower stall for the bathing.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that.
Any further questions or discussion for the applicant? If not, we will go ahead and open the public hearing at 8:32. Any public comments regarding item number four?
I have a question.
Raise your hand again.
Yes, public comment?
I'm Diane and my question is just that do you anticipate you will only be using 25% of your...
You're cutting out a bit. Were you asking if I'm using 25% of my property for the business?
Yes, do you anticipate that you will be using roughly 25% of your property for business?
I anticipate I'll be using 16%.
Any other public comments at this time? If not, we'll close the public hearing at 8:33. All right, further discussion at this point?
I...
Yes, Paul?
Well, two things. Looking in the Muni code, section 16.40, pet grooming is explicitly listed as something that is prohibited as a home occupation. However, if I read the heading of that section, it says, "The following is a list of uses normally prohibited since these typically fail to meet the use limitations, et cetera, et cetera," section 16.20. And so when I back up to section 16.20 and read the use limitation, I think that her description of the business actually meets those use limitations. So we're in a little bit of a quandary here where I think she's meeting the use limitations, but this is something explicitly called out in section 16.40. So I guess my thinking is it seems appropriate to allow this because it meets section 16.20 even though it's explicitly listed in 16.40. But I think I want to ask for Roy and Erin to comment on that and see how that should impact her decision here.
I made the same comment in the staff report. She does meet the use limitation. I'm not aware of any of them that she violated. And the fact that she's been operating without complaint would seem to bring forth that. I'm not sure that many people know she's been doing it. And that's the goal.
Other comment? Someone wanted to make a...
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Go ahead, go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, I mean, one, it's a startup business based on the mayor's approval because of whatever authority he has because of the COVID situation. So I wouldn't want to just pull the rug out from under and not approve it. So I think Paul's comments plus that are part to approving the business. However, I am aware of potential issues of barking dogs and things like that in my own neighborhood sometimes. So I think one condition I would like to see in this permit is that it has to be renewable every few years. The city has an opportunity to review compliance with the permit and stuff. And based on that, it doesn't create any problems.
I think unfortunately, I don't know, Tom, but about a third of your transmission got cut off. Was anybody else having the same problem?
I was, yes. Yes.
Yeah, I missed about a third of what you said. I don't know if it's your connection.
You turn off your cord, we will probably be able to hear you better.
Turn off what?
The camera. Turn off the camera and just use the microphone.
One wants to watch me. Let me... Turn off my camera. Is that any better? No. The average appearance of the commission was improved.
Yes.
What I was trying to say is that I think we shouldn't pull the rug out from under and disapprove this. I think because the mayor's already let her start a business, she needs the chance to continue the business. So I'm in support of the business, but I'm also cognizant that that, you know, there should be express limitations as she said in her Q and A response to the city that's attached to the package and that the permit is set as renewable every two years so that the city gives them opportunity to check for compliance with the permit.
Just a quick suggestion, my computer is telling me that Michelle Morgan is also trying to talk at the same time as Tom is. So if you'll mute your, I know you're not, but if you'll just mute your microphone, I think that may help with the sound. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that was the issue, Michelle. Thanks.
All right, do I need to speak again?
I think we've heard enough.
I was complaining of not being able to see me, so I'll leave the camera on.
No, you can turn the camera on. I don't think the camera was the issue.
Thank you.
And that way, you and Linda, I'm sorry, Richard are side by side, maybe holding hands or handcuffs, I'm not exactly sure. Anyway, to not make too light of this, I think what you were saying, Tom, is that to provide this, it's almost like this special use permit would be specific to Ms. Morgan, renewable every two years. And should she leave that location, that it could not be a dog grooming service. I just, I certainly understand what we're trying to do. I'm just not sure of the language. Can you help us with any of that, Erin?
Sure. You would just want to have the limitations that you somewhat already laid out that the home-based business is limited to this particular applicant and that the applicant's required to renew its application every two years beginning on the effective date of issuance.
Thanks, Erin. Tom, how does that sound to you?
That sounds right. And then there's kind of a Q and A in the page. It has a picture of some dogs in the kennels and she discusses how things will work. And I think some of those things probably ought to be put as conditions or at least, you know, the limitation of the number of dogs. So that, you know, I'm just sensitive to if, you know, I'm hoping she has a great business and all, but...
The number of cages directly relates to the traffic that results. It's a very rational limitation.
Yeah. So I think, you know, and hopefully she, her business booms and she'll want more space. But I think having some of those conditions to limit what she said was going to do is appropriate and then make the permit renewable.
Let me ask you this, Roy. If we were to make this recommendation to the city council, can it be, do you have enough information to reword this about the being specific to the applicant at that address and then some of the conditions as are outlined in her application? Or do we need to be very specific before the recommendation just gets passed to the city council?
I mean, what we'll pass is what we've heard you say. You know, we asked those questions, the Q and A, to prop this kind of discussion so you would know what you were impressed by and what you weren't. So far, I've heard, you know, the tie to the applicant, renewable for two years and limit the number of cages to what you see in the application.
Go ahead, Paul.
So I would like to suggest a slight modification to that. I don't think it's fair if the applicant is meeting the conditions that we set for. I, I don't think it's fair if the applicant is meeting the conditions that we set forth for us to tell her she has to come back and ask for permission again to keep doing the same thing in two years.
Yeah, that's, and, and that is the normal way that, that most ordinances work. It's a permit fee, there is a home-based permit fee. I think it's $50. It expires and as long as the business is still complying with your conditions, that's all she has to do. She doesn't have to come back to you.
Okay, okay, that, that's.
That's the way I understood what Tom was saying, but maybe I'm reading into it because I've written from many of these.
I don't want to come back to us. I think the staff can evaluate and approve the renewal.
The home-based business is a, and it's just, it's so Greg can go out there and see nothing's changed. All is good, you renew.
So is there any further discussion needed on this particular item number four? Go ahead, Andy.
I have a question about disclosure for somebody that might be anticipating purchasing neighboring properties or a property. Roy, is there anything in the city that somebody can go and see if our home-based businesses in the neighborhood are anticipating purchasing property in?
They're not on a zoning map, but they can make, we can generate a report and give it to them.
I just, I can see this happening more and more as things go forward, especially in the COVID situation. If this is not resolved in any timely manner, there will be more and more people working from home. And I think people purchasing property have a right to know what's going on in that particular neighborhood. Otherwise, you would assume it's our residential and people are going, working, coming home or working from home on their computer, not having traffic and people coming to visit that specific house. That's, that's the only thing, in fairness for others in the future. I mean, we're all here attending this. We understand that.
And we do post the information on our website, but somebody would have to know, you know, to look for it.
Unfortunately, Andy, you're.
I mean, you can get it on your own without asking us for a report, but it's probably easier for it to ask the staff for it.
Roy? Andy, are you still frozen up there or are you with us?
No, this is me being non-moving. I'm so it, Gary.
Yes, Larry.
A question for Roy.
Yes.
He kind of knew at this. What are the requirements or restrictions for any science on the property?
None. Prohibited.
Okay.
It's also prohibited to advertise the address anywhere.
Okay.
And that's, once again, the idea is people that frequent a home-based business, it's by invitation only. No, no walk-up traffic, no drive-up traffic. That, that's what, that's what keeps them invisible, which is the ultimate goal.
Right. Thank you.
Are we at a point where we can wag along here? Sure. Is, okay, seems we've ended the discussion. Is there a recommendation someone would like to make?
I'll make one. For agenda item 20-1647-CEO-U at 2502 Newton Drive, I make a motion that we recommend city council approve a conditional use permit based on the conditions that it's renewable every two years and it has limitations as, as the applicant expressed in the application with regarding the number of cages and dogs.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Well, I saw a lot of hands. Could I have somebody just verbally seconded? Seconded by Richard Brown. Any further discussion on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Charles, yourself? Approved, Michelle.
Yes.
Opposed.
I'm sorry, we have one opposed?
Yes.
Thank you, Andy. Motion passes. Six to one. Moving on to item number five, 20-1642 PR PLA, consideration of a preliminary plat approval in accordance with section 2.16 of chapter 10 of phase three of Tassara on Lake Travis, being 26.3999 acres situated in the Texas Mexico Railroad Company survey number 201, abstract number 2291, and the JS Peacock survey number 202, abstract number 2469, Travis County, Texas. If you would make the presentations, Roy?
Yes, sir. Hang in there one second. This is, as you're probably aware, the next phase of a very successful and, and growing community called Lakeside at Tassara. The reason your maps required me to Photoshop them is that our GIS department incorrectly interpreted the idea that they're showing two phases in their comprehensive master development plan. But one of them will be in front of you very soon. It just wasn't quite ready or it would have been here and therefore they noted it as a future phase. And our GIS technician was not paying real close attention and didn't, didn't pick up on that little bit of lettering. So I kind of corrected that for you. The good news is, is that we over notified and we didn't get a single written comment from anybody that, that, you know, was, was over notified. Everyone we got was in the 200 foot, the correct 200 foot notification area that is correctly indicated on your maps. But you'll see there's a bunch of numbers that are outside of that. I didn't Photoshop all those out, but none of those people responded. We had a couple of little minor design issues. They corrected them before, long before now, and what you have is reflective of all those requests we made.
All right. Thank you, Roy. Any questions of the staff?
Yes. I, I would like to understand that we are only considering plat 3B tonight, not 1B2.
That is correct.
Thank you.
It's those two, 92 lots, even though there's a, an erroneous reference to a larger number, that's just simply a typo.
Okay, thank you.
Well, it's 92 building sites and three POA lots, to be specific.
Any other questions with the staff? There is. Roy, I take it there is no applicant presentation?
Well, they're here. They're, they're.
Well, it's, I'm just saying it's not indicated on the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. That too.
If that's the case, I will just refer then to an applicant presentation. The applicant would like to speak?
Right.
I don't.
Darlene? Yes, I'm here.
Did you want to make a presentation on your application today?
I'd like to defer to my engineer, Jack. Would you like to, I mean, I'll, I'll kind of thank you all for, you know, seeing our application and reviewing our 92 lots in phase 3B. I'll give an introduction to Jack to, and he can kind of give you the specifics. But we've got builders that are doing very well as your building permits department has. We just, we've had a great pickup in activity and we need to get these lots on the ground as quickly as possible for our builders out there, which are Lennar, Highland Homes and Coventry Homes. So we've designed this section with Jack's help at Adams Engineering to be 40-foot lots and 50-foot lots, which is the demand needed by our three builders. And so that's kind of just the overview and I'll, I'll turn it over to our engineer to give a little bit more specifics on the, the questions that Roy had and how we responded to them to, to meet, you know, the, the things that Roy asked us to revise on our plans.
Prior to that, if you would please, I want to make sure for the recording, whoever was speaking, would you please identify yourself again? I don't think that was clear.
This is Darlene Luke. I'm a director with Heinz.
All right. Thank you, Darlene.
Well, good evening. My name's Jack Garner. I'm with Adams Engineering. We're the engineer of record for Lakeside at Tassara. Phase 3B that we're here asking for your approval on tonight is a continuation of 3A that we brought you a few years ago. We recently finished the construction. This is the next phase north of it. Similar product, a mix of 40s and 50-foot lots. The few comments that we had coming in with our preliminary plat were some basic geometry concerns, a couple rear lot line adjustments, no wholesale changes. We were able to get Eric and Roy happy with a few tweaks. Came right back in and that's what got us here in front of you guys tonight. So I'll be more than happy to entertain any questions you guys might have. I think Roy's done a good job with the layouts. Fits the land well. I think it would be a great addition to the great development out there. So if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to take them.
Questions of the applicant? Doesn't appear to be any questions of the applicant. If that's the case, we're going to open the public hearing at 8:56. The public hearing's open. Any members of the public that would like to comment at this time? Doesn't seem to be any comments. We will close the public hearing at 8:57. And any discussion? Doesn't appear to be any discussion. Then regarding item number five, that's 20-1642-PR-PLA, that the planning and zoning commission of La Gavista approves the preliminary plat in accordance with the section 2.16, chapter 10 of phase 3B of Tassara on Lake Travis, being 26.3999 acres situated in the Texas Mexico Railroad Company survey number 201, abstract number 2291, and the JS Peacock survey number 202, abstract number 2469, Travis County, Texas. Is there a second? Which, which, okay, well, Tom Monahan is second. Any further discussion?
I'll just. Quick, quick question, Gary. So I certainly was not here for the earlier phases of Tassara coming through planning and zoning. I'm very familiar with, you know, the housing out there. I have friends out there and have been out there a lot. Is, was there anybody here that was for the previous phase? And this is, to me, this looks like it's probably essentially more of the same and therefore pretty straightforward. Is that from other commission members that have some history? Is that a fair statement?
I would say so, and I know specifically we had a situation where they wanted to actually reduce the size of the lots themselves in a particular section that we did approve.
Thank you.
Yeah, Paul, just to further comment on Gary's comment. Yes, the lot size in some of the earlier plats were larger.
Yeah.
But they have found that, that they have a sweet spot with what they're doing and have pretty consistently stayed with this approximate lot size for the last phase or phase and a half. And so that's, that's their model at this, at this time. And as, as the rate things are going out there, I imagine we can see more of it.
Is there any further discussion on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Charles?
Yes, aye.
Any opposed? Not opposed, the motion passes unanimous?
Thank you for your favorable.
Thank you very much.
More than welcome. It's nine o'clock and it's been requested that we have a short recess and we will return back at 9:07. So will it be in recess starting at nine and return at 9:07? So will it be in recess starting at nine and return at 9:07? Hi, Erin. How are you?
Are we the only ones?
Yeah, I'm getting a little tired here. Poneac is kicking in. Hey, I've got a quick question. I was just looking at the, um, at the agenda tonight and it says, Agenda Item Number Eight, Discussion of Staff Land Use Reports. What is that exactly?
The, the document that's, that's after that, uh, will give you an idea of what, what they're doing. Um, this is something Roy put together, so he'll have to, uh, explain that further.
Okay.
Cause I hadn't seen that document before today. I don't reme-
This looks like maybe some kind of a draft thing that, just like a proposal, because it's got, you know, just parade names. And apparently-
It's, it's the same template that was used at City Council with all the, the real information stripped out of it and just some agenda stuff.
Thanks, Roy. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I didn't think it would be very appropriate to discuss an, an actual application. So-
I, I love the idea of talking about nuclear waste storage. I mean, what could be more exciting than that?
There you go. That's your typical zoning application, R1A, nuclear waste.
Roy, I think you actually used this form, uh, in, at the beginning of the material for the zoning change that I personally put through.
But I didn't want them discussing your application. So it's, it's the template that I've used in other cities for a long time. Uh, uh, let me put it this way. It was requested that we make that change, which is contrary to what was requested by the people that were here when I got here, that are now all gone. But, uh, it didn't go, it didn't go as well at City Council. It, it, the, the, the results were mixed at best. You know, but-
What Roy's referring to is, uh, we've had some requests for more detailed staff reports.
Yeah.
And so this is his version that would apply for, apply to, uh, P and Z applications.
And if, if I'm doing for City Council and that's what y'all want, we'll do it for you guys too. But that's, that's what the agenda item's about.
Thanks for entertaining my question.
Sure.
All right, it's, uh, 9:07 and, uh, we're, uh, going to, uh, resume our, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting here. The, uh, I guess just for a point of, uh, clarification, and I'll just, uh, read the notice that was, uh, published in the agenda. "The following agenda item refers to an application whose public hearing must be conducted as noticed and advertised. However, the applicant, application and all the submittal documents were based on a flawed legal description that was discovered by the staff only after a subsequent detailed review. No packet material was therefore published or distributed, and the application cannot be considered." So, uh, I take it, uh, Roy, this is item number six?
Yes, sir.
And item number six, now that it is officially 9:07? I'm, I'm sorry, what, did you have something there, uh, Roy?
That, that's simply correct. I can tell you that, uh, in the discussion with the applicant, that, uh, we suspect you're going to see a, a pared down version when it does come back. But, uh, there were all kinds of problems with the legal description, uh, uh, going back to the original 2007 application. And even the annexation was, was, seems to be a bit flawed. Uh, that we apparently in 2007 had, had a rezoning application that, uh, included property that wasn't annexed. Uh, again, because of a, a flawed application that nobody noticed at the time and we, we got it and we're going to fix it and, uh, I think he's going to pull back and focus on just, just his phase one development. I think is what's coming back to you, but we, we won't know that till we see it.
All right. Uh, Richard, I saw you were signaling something there? You're, you're muted, Richard, and so if you were trying to give us some kind of signal, I guess not. Uh, Roy, I'm going to, uh, uh, it appears that you gave the staff presentation. I'm going to go ahead and read item number six, uh, 20-1645-PPD-MOD, uh, so that it's, uh, actually read into the record. "Consideration of a recommendation regarding a zoning, uh, change request to amend the current, uh, First of the Cadian Co-Plan Development District PDD, hereafter to be referred to as Firefly Cove Planned Development District PDD in order to receive approval for a new concept plan only and modify the uses and, uh, development standards applicable to the property commonly referred to as 19517 Boggy Ford Road, which consists of approximately 289.309 acres, for which, uh, um, meters and bounds description is available from Travis County or by request from the city of Lago Vista." And, uh, I see that, uh, that, Roy, Roy, did we consider that was your staff presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, uh, is the applicant present?
I'm pretty sure he's not.
Okay, the applicant is not present. And then, uh, we, uh, can open the, uh, public hearing at, uh, I'll tell you what, uh, I don't think I allowed enough, uh, time in there for any, uh, comments or questions of the staff regarding this. Did any of the commission members have any questions of the staff? And, uh, Roy's presentation doesn't appear so. Uh, so we'll open the, uh, public hearing at, uh, 9:11. Doesn't appear, I believe it appears.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, because the, uh, the legal description was flawed, um, I don't think that you can open up the hearing. You don't, it wa- it wasn't properly noticed.
All right, unfortunately. Unfortunately, that was, uh, listed on the agenda to open a public hearing. So, uh-
We, we advertised a public hearing. It, it included, you know, this legal description, which is not correct. Even the acreage is not correct.
A little advice, counselor?
Because the legal description is flawed, um, if you open up a public hearing, you're opening it up on something that isn't accurate. And so I, I don't recommend that. This applicant's going to have to start over with the notice anyway. And so there's no, um, utility in having a public hearing on something that was legally flawed and that you can't consider anyway.
Understood. Unfortunately, it was listed here in the, uh, uh, agenda. So we are not opening a public hearing, correct, counselor?
Yes, sir. That's correct. That's my reference.
And if that's the case, then we will just, uh, move on to, uh, our next business, uh, item, which was, uh, comments from, uh, our, uh, beloved, uh, council liaison, David Williams. I see that, there you are, David.
Yes, how you doing?
Doing great.
I really don't have, I really don't have too many comments to make except on that, uh, on that staff report that you just saw a minute ago. Uh, we as a council felt that we needed to just have more information from the staff report. We, you know, when you review something, it would come to us and say, the P and Z voted six to one or five to one. We just wanted the, a little bit more clarification on what you discussed, so that each of the council members knew you looked at this particular item or you looked at that particular item, and then we have a better understanding of, of your vote. So that's, that's the only thing. So we asked Roy to kind of make it a little bit more specific in providing us information, and we wanted to make sure that we got your recommendations prior to anything that we voted on.
Uh, David, was that on all of them or was that on the dog grooming or?
Uh, but, well, anything that has a public hearing, you know, Roy gives us, anything that comes to us that, uh, recommend that we have to look at, we just wanted him to provide us a little bit more information in his staff report. There's nothing that you all have to do. It's just something that we wanted more clarification.
I guess an example might be the dog grooming service where there's a lot of detail that's in her application that needs to be part of the presentation to City Council?
Yes.
Okay.
If, if we, are we on that agenda item, sir? If it-
Well, you just mentioned it.
The next item.
Uh, I didn't know if he called it or not, but yeah.
Not yet.
And just for clarification, if, if I were to summarize it, you know, uh, one of the things I was requesting when I got here was to use that staff, start using that one-page staff summary sheet and make sure that you never exceeded that. And what that required us to do was to pick out only the most important or the things that we felt were the most important and discuss those only because of the, the space limitation. Uh, this approach covers more items, but hopefully more succinctly each item, if you will. That, that's kind of the, the difference in the approach. Uh, and, and, and if, like I said, we were instructed to do that when, when I first got here. Uh, I, like I said, every one of the people that, that made the request of what they wanted the staff report to look like is no longer here or on the commission or anything else. So, uh, when, when, when it was brought up, that the council wanted something different, we said it makes sense to, uh, bring that to the attention of the commission in case they wanted something different.
I, so I guess I, I, first, if there's anything different I'd like to see is when, Roy, when you prepare your report for City Council, we could just get a copy of it or I guess-
There's one of them already available, if you want.
It'll be in the pack.
I, I will send you a link to that staff report or I can, uh, it's, it's already on the city, the, the previous city council meeting on your last zoning change recommendation. It, it's in their packet.
Yeah. Okay.
Would it, I have a question, Roy. Would it, would it be too cumbersome, for instance, you know, now that we're doing this on video, that that be available for the city council review if they have questions about the specific process that we did in making our decision, then all comments would be included and wouldn't require that you're be a stenographer and try to catch every nuance of the discussion?
It, there is a section on theirs that obviously has no relevance to you. There's a, a fourth section discusses exactly what you decided and what comments you made. And that was part of the, 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 the one that's on the city council website. So, yeah, everything is, it's more information, but it's not discussed in anywhere near the detail that it used to be. You know, once again, what we were forced to do before, pick one or two items that were most important and discuss those thoroughly. This is a different approach. This is approach that says discuss everything, but keep it concise. Yes, sir.
I would like to say, um, um, the, the one, one-page limitation seems way too arbitrary and that I would much rather see all of what you think is, uh, relevant and, uh, worthy of our consideration, uh, not just what you can squeeze onto one page. If it has to be, uh, given to us in the form of a footnote of a link where we can go, I'm sorry if we're keeping you awake, Ms. Silvera. I know I get, I know I get kind of long-winded at times and it does put people to sleep. I know that. Um, but if you, uh, need to stick to one page, maybe you could, uh, footnote a, a link to some, uh, other, other thoughts that you have, other relevant, uh, comment.
And I, and I might add, uh, the people that, that gave me that directive, none of them are here anymore. So I, I don't know that it's valid anymore. And, and like I said, to me, you might ask David whether, what, what his thoughts are. You know, he actually used it. You know, that, that to me is the most relevant thing. Did it, was it mission accomplished? Or does it still need work or what? I, I don't know.
Roy, are you asking me?
Yes, sir.
Well, I mean, in certain cases, it, it, it will be a one-page. In other cases, if it's a more detailed, uh, if we're talking about Lakeside by Tassera, there may be more things that you had to discuss that we're going to make it a little bit longer, staff report. So it really depends on the number of issues that are in that particular situation. It's, it's not, it doesn't have to be a one-page. It just needs to be, uh, what are the issues? Wha- wha- what, what were the concerns? How do you, will you address the concern? That kind of thing. It gives us a complete, complete understanding of what we're dealing with.
I, I have done a few that were, you know, within a page, uh, at, at my previous positions, I, I, I reviewed these and other people did. I did do them occasionally, but they were typically the things that were going to end up in big lawsuits and that sort of thing. Uh, so there were a few that were two full pages, but, uh, you know, the, the one that I did for last council meeting is probably a little more detailed than, than normal, but not by much. You know, one of the things that made it lengthy is because you guys have site, uh, plan review. So whenever it's a, a zoning application change, you're going to get conditions that are related to that site plan and, and those have to be enumerated and it takes some room. Yes.
Um, so a couple of comments. I would, I would second the, the, the earlier comment that, you know, I think what Roy writes up as a staff presentation for us is, is pretty good and I, I have no, no, I would certainly have no request for it to be shortened. So I would say, you know, write what you need to write, what you think we need to know, whether that's a half a page or five pages, you know, that just, uh, I, I look to you to, to tell us what we need to know. That's point number one. Um, point number two, um, you know, I don't need, I don't think it needs to be in this format for me. Um, I, I do like that, that this has potential alternative decisions as a, as a category. And what I would, my observation would be that sometimes you give us that, sometimes you don't. I, I, I would find that helpful. And then I, I would suggest it, it, to me, it would be helpful if you feel like to get a staff recommendation, uh, you, you answer, I choose to be with that. But one thing I don't want to be in is, is in a situation where, um, are you guys still hearing me? I'm getting a signal that it's poor network connectivity.
Yep. You were cutting in and out.
Okay, camera's off. Hopefully that helps. Um, I don't want to be in a situation, I don't want to be in a situation where, uh, where Roy, you and staff have a pretty strong opinion on something and, and we don't understand that, uh, opinion. Uh, so, so I think, you know, where you have a strong opinion, I'd like to know about it.
Well, and, and there is method to this madness. Okay, although I, we'll put it this way. The way I've done this in the past, the, we will list every potential reasonable, uh- The way I've done this in the past, the, we will list every potential reasonable decision you might make. The condition list will be as comprehensive as we know how to make it, with the understanding that you could, any of those you don't like, you say, I don't want number three, leave it out. The other thing is, is that the order is not exactly random. Okay? We will list them in the order, not that we necessarily recommend, but that I would use a slightly different terminology. The order is that we will list them in the ones that we think are most easily legally defensible. Okay? The one at the top of the list would think is more defensible than the one at the bottom of the list. It's that simple. And you, but you.
Okay, good. Thank you. My last comment, if, yeah, right. My last comment, I think what Andy was saying earlier is there might be benefit if the actual audiovisual transcript of this meeting was available for council members, and for that matter, for citizens to view. And Andy, did I follow you right on that? Was that where you were going with that comment?
Yeah. The tape has always been available. As long as we're doing them this way, unless there's an internet outage like we had last week, the video is also available. Now, when we go back to regular meetings, those are not filmed, they're just audio recorded.
Uh, I didn't realize the audio recordings were available to public or council members. Those are on the website somewhere, Roy?
You have to request them.
Ah, okay. Thank you.
It's like any other public information. But the council members are aware they're available. They know they listen to tapes when they do the minutes.
All right, just for clarification, we kind of jumped ahead. We had comments from the council liaison, but we jumped right ahead to the discussion of potential changes to the staff land use report summary. So I just wanted to make sure that that was in the record, that that item was being discussed. Any further discussion on item number eight? If not, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. And all matters listed in item six, consent agenda are to be considered routine by the commission and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be conducted separately. And that is the consideration, consider approval of the following minutes of July 9, 2020. I'm sure everybody has had an opportunity to spend a considerable amount of time perusing and reviewing the minutes of July 9, 2020. Any additions or corrections? Or perhaps a motion?
Uh, one correction that I want to note, on page six, in item three, letter F, under recommendation, it correctly states the commission voted four to one. It says there was no opposition, but I think, given that there was one nay vote, there was opposition, and my memory is that was Mr. Brown.
Yeah. I think, I think that she might have been distracted by one of her thousand phone calls.
Well, yeah, I understand. One thing for the correctness we should get.
Yep.
Would you make sure that's communicated, Roy, to the council?
And she, she does do the minutes from these tapes. But last month, there was no video, so it was harder. When she can see people speak, it helps you figure out how to fill in the holes. And she didn't have that last month. It was, she struggled with it.
Any other addition or correction at this point? If not, is there a motion to approve the minutes? Without one exception?
Yeah.
Somebody else?
I'll make a motion where you approve the minutes from the last.
Any second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Larry Hagler. All in favor of the minutes with one amendment?
Aye.
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 As well as yourself, Charles?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries. In terms of future agenda items, any one like to?
Mr. Chairman, a quick, quick question, if I may? I think in the, in the comments, it's been noted that we, I don't know that we opened for public comment on the previous agenda item before we closed it.
It's not a public hearing, but it is public comment. Typically, they would ask to make a comment. He wouldn't have to open it.
Okay.
Which, which one were you referring to? Item number six?
Yes, item number six.
The staff report.
Yeah, the staff report. I believe, based on his comment in chat, that Mr. Roberts may want to say something. And so I was just reflecting his request there.
Oh, I didn't know Mr. Roberts had a, had a question or comment. Well, he's missed his opportunity now.
No. We have to allow for public comment, so I need the chairman to reopen item number eight, just to take his public comment.
We're talking about item number eight, discussion of potential changes to the staff land use report summary?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. Mr. Roberts, go right ahead.
Hi, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I think several of you were reading my comments as I was frantically typing and getting a lot of typos in there. Mr. White, you spoke to one of those. Thank you for that. I appreciate it. I think that that, the more detail is always the better, I think. The more information we have, the more informed decisions we can make. And that doesn't just go for the council, but also for the citizens. And so I love the idea of seeing more detail in these reports. But accompanying those reports, I think, having these, these go-to meetings made publicly available, such as the city council meetings for publicly available, I think that that's ideal. I understand that when circumstances change, this venue will no longer, meetings will no longer be held in this venue. And they'll go back to council chambers. And I would submit that those should be recorded as well. There's off, I've had discussions with council members in the past, and I find myself explaining and having to play back audio recordings and video recordings of these meetings for proper context. And, you know, there's only so much that staff can put in even this, this revised report. And I can only put myself in the council's shoes, and especially on a controversial application that comes before you that has been referred to council, I would think that someone like Frank Robbins, who likes to get into the weeds of things, for example, I could see him wanting to go back and look at the video. And I think just as they should have that accessibility, so too should the citizens. And so maybe that's something you guys can talk about in the future and consider. I think that that would be fantastic. I think that would be great optics for the citizens. And I think Lago Vista would get behind you guys on that, and it would be a great, a great win for everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. All right. Any other items suggested for future agenda items at this point? That being the case, it is now 9:33 and the P and Z is adjourned.
Very good. Thank you.
Good night, gentlemen.
Have a good weekend. See you later.